Call the meeting to order at this time? Roll call.
Roll call. This action is taken by calling each board member's name with the board member entering president. Mr. Murray?
President.
Mr. Selby?
Present.
Ms. Wilson?
Present.
Mrs. Hickenbotham?
Present.
Mr. Kazook?
Present.
All board members present.
Next item is the adoption of the agenda.
Of course, this is a special call meeting, so we cannot add anything to the agenda. This is in place of last Monday's meeting where we were at Campbellsville for the Kentucky School Boards Association meeting. I don't have anything to recommend to strike from the agenda, so I recommend the agenda be approved as presented.
Motion. Second. Vote.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hickenbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item is public comments.
I do want to note a couple of things. First, I just want to show, extend again our appreciation. We had a bus involved in the accident last week. SRO Jack Greider was quick on the scene along with Troy Young, other law enforcement agencies and our first responders. Really appreciate Principal Webb and Assistant Principal Womack. I think kids on the bus, Ms. Jill's an elementary teacher. She can appreciate the fact that in a situation like that, I think seeing your principal brought a sense of calm to those kids. And even though some of them were obviously middle school and high school kids, many of them had went through Salem Doors, and so that helped that situation. You never want to get that call. You never want to hear that chatter on the radio, do you, Mr. Greider? But in all, in all, you know, it could have been, we're blessed for the outcome. Called all the parents and stuff again that night and just to check on everybody, and everybody's good. Our bus driver was released that evening, still doing some follow-up care, but he's going to be okay, too. So I just want to say publicly appreciation to everybody that was involved with that. All of our first responders, the EMTs were fabulous, talked to every kid. Some parents came on scene. Again, Sheriff's Department, our SROs and mechanics were on-site. But it's a situation you don't want to deal with, but you truly appreciate everyone coming together when those instances happen. So thank you to all those parties. And also, just secondly, we've got some education majors in our audience today, so it's always good to have you all at board meetings and just appreciate you being here, appreciate you wanting to be. If you're not already a teacher, appreciate you wanting to go down that degree because we definitely need teachers. So welcome.
Anything else? Next item, Russell County Education Association Certified Employee Recognition Jill Adams, Russell Springs Elementary.
As Ms. Amber's coming up, I will welcome her to her new role as President of Russell County Education Association. So we look forward to working with you in that new role. And she has the distinct honor of recognizing Ms. Jill at this time. And he can't be here. Of course, he was coming back from Lexington, but I do want to share some thoughts, if you don't care real quick, that Mr. Reynolds was noting about you today, Ms. Jill. Let me pull it up here. I'm sorry. His phone's been hateful all day. Maybe that's a sign. He had noted that she is, quote, "She is dynamite. This is well deserved. I'll make it if I can get back from Lexington in time. She is a principal's dream." So that's, they're pretty good words there from a principal for a teacher in their building. So I'll hush.
It is my honor tonight to recognize our Teacher of the Month, Mrs. Jill Adamson. She is currently a kindergarten teacher at Russell Springs Elementary, where she has been shaping young learners for the past four years. This year marks an incredible milestone, her 20th year in education. Her career began at Walnut Hill Elementary in Casey County, where she spent 16 years teaching across several grade levels.
Then she saw the light.
Fourth grade, six years. First grade for six years. She has been all over. Kindergarten for four years, and eventually she felt the call to come home to Russell County and be herself thankful she did. Her academic journey is equally inspiring. She holds an Associate's Degree in Applied Science as a Clinical Laboratory Technician from the University of Kentucky. She earned her Bachelor's Degree in Elementary Education from Lindsey Wilson College and later achieved her Master's Degree in Educational Leadership from Eastern Kentucky University. When I asked her what she loves most about teaching, she said this: "I love seeing the difference in a child learning to read and realizing that they can do it. The light shines in their eyes and I can see it. In kindergarten, students come not even knowing the letters in their own name. By the time they leave me, they are reading. It doesn't get much better than that."
That's true.
Outside the classroom, she is a proud mother of four and a dedicated supporter of all things Laker, cheering on football, volleyball, cheerleading, and the mighty Laker marching band. She is also deeply devoted to her church and church family. Her favorite quote is one that perfectly reflects her strength in faith: "I can do all things through Christ who strengthens me." Olympians 413. It is clear that her passion, dedication, faith have shaped all of your career, but the many lives she's touched along the way. So tonight, I'm presenting you with a $100 check to spend however you'd like and a certificate.
Thank you.
I want to know where the football player's at, but I personally invited him to be here.
I'll take that up with Coach Rich.
I was going to say, he probably at practice.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Jill. Appreciate you. I got the pleasure to be, we did senior mock job interviews, and I got to interview her son on Friday. And I invited him to come, though he was going to try to make it.
Next item is consent agenda.
We had the previous meeting minutes, payment of bills, school activity fund reports, field trips, and the treasures number report.
Treasures report for the month of August 2025, balance on hand at the beginning of the month was $19,820,708.20. Total receipts for the month were $2,587,91.89. Total receipts and beginning balance together, $21,879,509.9. Disbursements for the month were $1,865,878.13. Balance at the close of the month was $20,013,621.90. And our fund balances for General Fund, Fund One, $10,354,342.78. Special Projects, Fund Two, $619,334.17. District Activity, Fund Twenty-One, $46,582.62. Capital Outlay, Fund Three Ten, $131,143. Even. FSPK Building Fund, Fund Three Twenty, $149,834.7. Construction Fund, Three Sixty, $8,138,563.66. Debt Service, Fund Four Hundred, $0. Food Service, Fund Fifty-One, $573,861.66. Fiduciary Fund, Fund Seven Thousand, $0. And our total cash and bank for all the funds was $20,013,621.96.
Thank you, Ms. Carnes. There are no changes or amendments. I recommend approval of the consent agenda items.
Motion. Mr. Selby? Second. Mr. Murray? Vote.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hickenbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
I was going to circle back to you again, Mr. Murray.
Next item on the agenda is approval of the working budget for school year 2025, 2026, fiscal year 26.
Ms. Carnes has some comments, and then I'll get into the action item of it for the budget. I'm sorry. Do me a favor. Go through the part. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. KRS 160.470 requires local boards of education to adopt a working budget. Of course, we have three different cycles for the budget year, and this is our, it's literally called working budget because throughout the remainder of the school year till June 30th, this will be the budget that we will work off of. The working budget's been presented and must be adopted and submitted to the Kentucky Department of Education by September 30th of each year. Revenues and expenditures of $30,520,743. Just for comparison, you'll note that on there for fiscal year '25, our previous fiscal year, it was $28,905,768. Of course, we have an increase in SEAC and other things.
So very little change in this from what we had as our tentative budget in May. Obviously, we actually improved when we had some people retire since then, and we had new folks in those positions, so swapping out of our staff, giving them all at the correct location. The big change between last year and this year, of course, is the salary because of the raise. We did a pretty substantial raise this year. Other than that, everything else kind of holding steady. I did have to add some pretty significant amount to electricity costs, which, I mean, if you've got an electricity bill at home, they're all going up. That's just the way it is. That was the only other category that really had to have a little work tweak to it. I always checked the electricity and like a water sewer cost, and they were still coming in within what we already had budgeted, so we've been good on that. But electricity, we had to add anywhere from $10,000 to $25,000, $30,000 per location. Enough to cover what we spent last year, a nice little cushion for any increases in the cost or the usage throughout the year. We've still got money budgeted to buy our three buses like we've been doing for many years now, so that's in there. It's, you know, kind of, we've got to a good place, I think, where we've sort of got a kind of a rotation going or a set. These are the things we do, and we're not having to think about skipping them. We're being able to find and do those things. So we're in, I think, a really nice position right now.
So it's, appreciate Ms. Carnes' work on it. It's, yeah, it's always good to be able to pay for it. I don't know if you heard her, when Ms. Brenda laughed, Ms. Carnes, she said her electricity bills went up about that much, too. So, yeah, it's pretty substantial. But it is another good, solid budget. You know, plenty of the state required contingencies, and we talked about that last year when we, when the board voted to give the raise and impacts on things of that. So I recommend approval of the school year '25, '26, and school year '26 working budget, but it's more than required state contingencies. The revenue and expenditures of $30,520,743.
Second.
My second.
Mr. Murby?
Mr. Murphy?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hickenbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Next item on the agenda is Legends of Laker Nation Athletic Pass.
At our previous school board meeting, Ms. Brenda had noted about providing some type of pass for grandparents or for seniors and talking with some other school districts and getting some ideas that do something like this, similar to this. We are proposing what we're referring to as Legends of Laker Nation Athletic Pass for Russell County residents age 62-plus. I do want to note, though, with conference games, when we host a district play or we host regional play, that is split with other school districts, and they would be required to play, would be required to pay at that point. We would like some time just to get it all together, get people registered. We thought January the 1st of 2026 would be a good time. I know Ms. Carol and I talked that at times we thought we may set up some, up here at ANC, and encourage people to come by during, you know, certain hours during over, you know, two or three week period, and put out and advertise some hours for folks to come by and get their card and record their name and stuff like that. Of course, non-transferable, but if you've seen that on your board book, kind of a rendering, it does note entity entitles the bearer to free admission to all regularly scheduled athletic events, excludes conference, district, and regional play. So we just kind of thought, again, that's, if you all come up with another name or want to do something different, certainly, certainly, we just kind of thought that Legends of Laker Nation, you know, we refer to it as Laker Nation. And so this would be 62-plus. Some districts said if you get into, they tried to do the grandparent part, but then you, you know, how are you going to make, somebody has to verify that it's grandparents, stuff like that. So just doing that 62-plus, and everybody can get in free with that. But again, if you all don't like the title of that or anything else, we can, we can change anything. Just something we worked off at the office.
And I make that motion.
Okay.
And I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hickenbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
I think that will be a positive thing.
Item, next item on the agenda is bid recommendation, marching band practice area project.
I don't hear any clapping, Kylie. I mean, not a bit. You tell, I was going to say, I was going to tell them, but you can tell that.
I was teasing Kylie because last time she was here, I think there was a big band community presence. Allison said, "I think Kylie got a standing ovation." So I was teasing her. I'm going back to Russell County tonight if you want to go. But it's good to be with you guys tonight. We're here to update you on the bids that we received on the band practice area project. I'll let Kylie walk through that. And then, so we have two board agenda items tonight. One is the update on the bids that we received, and then the other is the BG1 for that project, just updating all the numbers based on post-bid numbers. So Kylie, you want to kind of walk through the bid?
So on September 16th of the bid opening, we received one bid from Branscombe Construction, which you guys know pretty well. We're happy to work with them. That bid was for $548,583. And that was the base bid, including alternates one and two. So the BG3 that we presented to you guys at the August board meeting, the construction cost estimate was for $485,000. That estimate did not include the green asphalt top coat, which was estimated at $40,000. This was added back to the project by addendum, so that is in the bid that we got from Branscombe. With the green asphalt top coat, the estimate is within 4% of the bid results. So we're in really good shape there.
Again, this, this project was for capital outlay funds. We're not pulling it from the general fund. But Ms. Carnes, why don't, she can explain that better. And just for those in audience and otherwise, when we say those capital outlay funds, what exactly what we're talking about?
Well, capital outlay is a part of the SEAC formula. So where we have building funds that we generate from our local tax revenues that are matched by the state, and then, of course, construction funds come from where we sell bonds mostly. Capital outlay, we get $100 per student that's on our ADA for the SEAC.
Average daily attendance.
Yeah, the same number of students that we get all of our funding for, we get this $100 that's kind of set aside for capital outlay. So it gets used a lot like the building funds. A lot of districts are bonded to the point that they use a lot of their capital outlay to pay bond payments. We have not had to do that. I think maybe we had to pay some once four, five years ago. We're probably going to get there where we have to have it. But at the moment, we're able to utilize those capital outlay funds to do extra, to fund smaller projects or things. For example, you can, you can use them to purchase buses. So sometimes where, even though we budgeted, we're able to move those funds over and pay for those buses, which, you know, helps us build our general fund balance up. But they have to be used for the maintenance of our buildings or the payments on our bonds and things. We can't take them and add staff anywhere. We can't pay salaries with them or anything like that. They have to be used for only a pretty strict set of truly maintenance costs, not anything what you'd call operational even. Like, there was a time they would grant some leniency and use them to pay electricity bills and things. Many years ago, they allowed this, but they started restricting them back, so you can't use them for that many things. But they are great for small projects where we want to fund something that's not really big enough to sell bonds for. We don't really want to tap in anymore in our bonding capacity anyway, because we're trying to, you know, build that up for our middle school project we're looking forward to. But when we've not had to spend all of our capital outlay toward bonds, and actually, this last year, we didn't even have to spend all of our building funds toward our bond payments, those funds can also be moved over and used the same. So we've been able to have a nice little extra there to do some small things like this band project without having to pull that from the general fund or roll it in some other kind of bond issue later on or anything. So we've got it covered. Basically, these funds that if we didn't use them for this, they could have sat there until such time we needed them for a construction project or bond payments or something. We couldn't, you know, really use them for much else.
That's why she explained that and I didn't. Thank you, Ms. Carnes. But again, the emphasis, you know, I just don't want to be any confusion that we're spending dollars on something that could pay a salary or something like that, because they're not. It's not. So we're, it's, I agree with Ms. Carnes. It's a great use for a project with this, and the band is well deserved, absolutely. Anything else for you?
That's really it. The BG1 document there, like I said, is also upon your agenda for consideration. It, every, so up until we actually receive bids, everything is an estimate. So this has all the actual numbers based on bids received and updated costs for that hauled into the revised BG1 after all the post-bid information was evaluated.
So after pending your all's approval, they'll issue a construction directive, and we'll have our kickoff meeting.
Yep.
And then things can get rolling. Any other questions for them regarding the bids or anything like that? That was good. So I recommend approval of the bid recommendation from Sherman-Carnard Bernhardt Architects for the Russell County Schools' marching band practice area. Of course, you all have all the bid documentations in the bid recommendation letter. Of course, it was in your board packet. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hickenbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
That's exciting stuff there.
Next item is revised BG1 marching band practice area project.
So as Justin and Kylie noted, the BG1 reflects post-bid. I have to turn this back into the state, so I had to update this after your all's, pending your all's approval. We'll sign off on it, and that has to go back to the state because you have to do a revised BG1 post-bid. And so this finalizes all the numbers. Everything was updated, including all the soft costs, architect, engineer, all those types of things. It's a total project of $644,121.3. So this revised BG1 notes that number. So I recommend approval of the revised BG1 for the marching band practice area project as presented. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hickenbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Next item on the agenda is purchase of benches for First National Bank Athletic Complex.
Yeah, they look good. We thought that red color would contrast with the blue stadium. And so this, that's exactly what it is. I'm just, I've told you all before, with the naming rights fund, we don't spend out of that, obviously, without you all knowing that and what that goes up. I think this is a good, a good purpose for that, ours to purchase some benches. I said not to exceed $10,000. I put up a sample picture of one of them, and we are thinking of red color, so kind of give a little contrast to the blue that's up there, primarily for underneath the stadium there to provide some seating areas up underneath the stadium.
How many of them you playing a lot? I'm not.
Pardon me?
How many of them you playing?
The ones from Uline, which is on bid list and really good quality stuff, they're about $700 and something, but they last forever and they're coated. But we hope we can have some negotiating with some other companies as well, so we could, we could get eight, nine, 10 with that.
There are a lot of action under there.
Oh, there's a lot of action. Yeah.
Yeah. That's good.
And classes go out there sometimes, too. And so they, they do little things out there, especially as they're going, as that PE class is going out to run and stuff. So it'd be good, good some opportunities. I recommend approval of the purchase of benches for the First National Bank Athletic Complex, utilizing the naming rights fund at a cost not to exceed $10,000. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hickenbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item, out of state and/or overnight trips.
We have several out of state and overnight trips. One's to Indiana with NJLTC on October, Thursday, October 16th, and they'll return later that evening, but they are going out of state with that. It's not overnight. And the girl soccer team is going to Foley, Alabama for a tournament. They're going to depart on October 17th and return on Tuesday, October 21st, part of their tournament. We have the Drama Club going down to Tennessee and Crossville for the Cumberland County Playhouse. On the, on the trip request of this, on, on our system, it shows as if they're going twice, but it's really just how it's done in the system for the Crown Plaza, for the, not Skills USA. No.
Skills USA.
No, but, no, it's a...
GSA.
United Nations Kuna with Laura Davidson going there. And then Indianapolis, Indiana for the FFA, we'll be going there. Another one for athletics. It's categorized as under athletics for our system, but the Cass High School for the marching band in Georgia with Bands of America. Another one to Louisville for the, and St. Matthews. The system, it notes everywhere for Crown Plaza and return trip. And then we'll have athletics, the dance. This is not on until December, but they, they are going to stay all night, but they have one competition in Louisville at DuPont Manuel, and then they will be going on to Charleston, Indiana. They're not too far across the, across the border for a second competition. Good opportunity. She talked to me about that. She said it was just two, she said, "Mr. Ford, it's two opportunities for our students right there, close together." So we were, I told her that, you know, we would bring that before you all for, for those trips. And middle school, pardon?
That's all I'm doing.
Yeah. Well, I recommend approval of the out of state or overnight trips as presented.
Motion. Gerald. Second. Brenda. Vote.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hickenbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Next item on the agenda is individual intellectual assessment specialist. What's a mouthful?
It is a mouthful.
Services contract.
So this is an individual intellectual assessment specialist, IIA services, students that are, need IQ testing and reports written for eligibility for special education services. Either they've been referred or it's time for a reevaluation for that. So this is that agreement for that.
Have we had, we haven't had one before.
Yes. Marissa retired. This is her, she holds that, holds that certification, and so does Tracy Miller, that works for us. They both hold that IIA certification. They can get an IQ test, just like a psychologist, a school psychologist can. But that is a certification no longer offered in the state of Kentucky. No university offers that anymore. Well, no, they had it. They weren't, yeah, they had it. Prior to, you had to have a guidance counselor certification as a pathway for that because tests, assessments, and measurements. But now, there's not a university one that offers that, and it's a Kentucky, it's a Kentucky term issued by the Education Professional Standards Board, but it's, it's no longer offered. They don't. We're in significant need of a school psychologist and can't find anybody, although we do have employees working on that certification. So really, really excited about that.
Motion.
Make it. Okay.
Second.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hickenbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Next item is memorandum of agreement, Lake Cumberland Head Start.
Another item, agenda item, that you all are very familiar to see each year. This is our annual memorandum of agreement with Lake Cumberland Head Start. I recommend approval of the agreement as presented.
Motion. Second. Mr. Murray? Vote.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hickenbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item is schoolwide fundraisers.
Jameson Elementary School's having some fundraisers. Jameson Elementary School's having some fundraisers, September twenty-second to the twenty-sixth for a book fair. September sixteenth to October seventeenth, impact merch store, stadium blankets, soft coolers, and apparel. October sixteenth is, is their fall festival. December the second is their Christmas extravaganza, concession, saloon auction. February the ninth through the thirteenth is a book fair and May eighteenth to the twenty-second is their closing book fair. And the middle school has a couple of fundraisers that they'll be doing throughout the school year and selling blankets and umbrellas with the Laker and middle school memorabilia there. I recommend approval of the schoolwide fundraisers as presented.
Motion. Joy. Second. Vote.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hickenbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Gazook?
Yes.
Next item, special education procedure update.
So, this is just a change, a lot of school districts have already made this change. Really, if you're not in the special education world, it's a little bit, kind of, a little bit harder to explain, but our students in special education have an annual goal and then they have short-term objectives. Ms. Joy's shaking her hand, she's like me, she's written many of them in our day. Her is a speech language pathologist. Now, short-term objectives are no longer required for students in special education unless they're participating in the alternate assessment. So, this procedure update, it's just like a regular policy update, you all have to review it, there's no, there's no vote to approve it, it's just like our regular procedure. So, now, once this reviewed by the board, when our special education teachers write IEPs or individual education plans, they no longer will include short-term objectives, they'll have the student's overall goal unless they are a student that participates in the alternate assessment. Happy to answer any questions about that, you all have it in your board book.
Next item, personnel reports.
Crystal Cooper hired Jameson Elementary School Instructional Assistant in the Modern Severe Disability Unit. Ben April hired Russell County Middle School Head Boys Basketball Coach. Corey Thomas hired Russell County High School Assistant Boys Basketball Coach. Terry Dugger hired Russell County High School Assistant Wrestling Coach. Linda Love hired Russell County High School Cook and cashier. Raymond Haynes resigned Russell County High School Custodian. Marissa Popwell hired district substitute teacher and Courtney Clark hired district substitute teacher. I, I also want to note, I was hoping we would have it for this board meeting, but, but I don't. Somerset Community College is working on an agreement that will allow us to use the gymnasium of the old Russell Springs Elementary School as a practice place for our wrestling team, because wrestling goes on the same time that basketball does, so gym time is hard, you know, to find the time for gym. So, they've been very gracious, wrestling starts next month in October. It depends on when it comes in and maybe some other things. We might, we might need to look at a special board meeting, again, I was hoping to have it, but they're, it's under their review process. Unless something has changed, they're not gonna charge us anything to use their gym. They just wanted a certificate of insurance, which our insurance company provided that with no charge, and then I think they're gonna allow our wrestling coach to do the unlock and lock and take over that. So, that was my last communication with them, so they're bringing it through to all their teams and stuff like that. So, we really appreciate Somerset Community College and the use of the, of the gymnasium, which was, when I was in school there, it was also cafeteria, right? But it's in great shape, it's, it's still, it's gonna be a great spot. Coach Borne has went and looked at it, really excited, thought it would just meet the wrestling team's needs, very good. So, they'll practice there, we will still have our home meets, obviously, making use of one of the, our gyms here. So, really appreciate Somerset Community College working with us on that. So, I'll have an update with you all as soon as I get the agreements.
Next item, public comments. Ms. Runyon?
Going back to the Legends of Laker Nation, I don't know about anybody else, but I find it hard to watch a sporting event without popcorn.
Maybe you can choke up a dollar.
I don't read anywhere on that card that says it's gonna give you free popcorn.
I'll give you a dollar.
Zack, give him a dollar.
But, yeah, more serious one is, and I did what Mr. Selby recommended I do, I'm sitting in the front row, but it's still really hard through a lot of the discussion, not how it's solved, I don't think you give everybody a microphone, probably, but it's hard to hear.
I think that, that.
And when you get to be a senior, it's harder to hear.
Well, I think we're hearing out of safety.
No, I know, it's hard to hear. I think it's that unit too, when it's running, it's hard to hear.
The mechanical room's next door and I hear, I hear the pumps.
I hear.
Joy, for the geothermal wells.